And if somebody want to make a donation.
Tierney Splashpad.
Yeah, I don't know how you can check with me though.
Name it after a comic book store. Good advertising.
I'll have to check those.
No, no, that's the first part we're gonna do.
We're live.
All right, I'll go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting for February 3rd, 2020. Looks like all are present and accounted for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Excuse me, folks in the lobby. Can you keep it down? Thank you. Invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Gardner.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day and we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to come together as a city and as your elected officials to serve the people of Maumell, Father. We just ask for your guidance and blessings in everything that we do, that we do what's in the best interest of serving the city and that we do it in your glory, Father, that you'll be glorified in all that we do and all the actions that we take, Lord. We're so thankful for all those that serve our city every day, keeping us safe and working for us to make this a great place to live, and we just ask your protection on them and all that they do for us as the citizens of Maumell, Father. Thank you so much for all the blessings that you give us each and every day, in Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Moving on to special guests and announcements, how dare I forget to add the introduction of our new human resources director, Director of Human Resources, Ms. Keisha Walker. If you could come on up to the podium. Ms. Walker comes immediately from Goodwill Industries of Arkansas where she was the benefits coordinator. She's worked for UAMS as an HR manager and program coordinator, Little Rock Job Corps, human resource manager, the list can go on and on. And she has a bachelor's in science and business administration and a master's of art in human resource management. But aside from our conversations and stuff during the interview process, perhaps the best selling point was the fact that she listed some of her former supervisors as her references on the resume. And I'm pretty sure each of those individuals would jump over backwards to get you back. One city's trying to get you to move out to Mississippi, so if you can make your way there, they gave glowing recommendations, and if she lives up to half of what they said, then by golly, we've got ourselves a great human resource director. So just introducing Ms. Keisha Walker, and I figured I'd let her introduce herself and say hi to y'all, so be nice. If you could just make sure that.
Can you hear me? Hello, again, my name is Keisha Walker, and I was ecstatic to receive a call from Mayor Norris at 6 o'clock inviting me on to an interview with the City of Maumell. I know the City of Maumell is a great place to work, and that's something that I hold near and dear to me, enjoying what I do and helping and providing resources for not only the employees but the employees as well. So that's my purpose here and to try to keep us out of trouble. So I thank you all for welcoming me today, and whatever I could do, please let me know.
Hello.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone, that was not just a decision I made, I think I interviewed every, over 13 people with Jared, the former HR director. And then we had a second round of interviews, and I know the city attorney, city clerk, heck, I don't remember, Ms. Vega was in there because she'll work with, and we had a whole group of folks in there, so thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the January 21st regular meeting, you've received a copy in the council packet, is there any discussion on that?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion, second, to approve the minutes from the January 21st regular meeting. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I have not received any public comment cards, so we'll jump right on to the financial statement review from December, Ms. Vega.
Hi there, so the only changes that were made were booking the resolution of 2019-47, which was the capital improvements contribution for 2019. And we also have another contribution that was booked in January to our capital improvement fund. I added to our financials the capital improvement fund that I'll be reporting. They'll only change in January, and then they'll be the same unless we decide to spend out of it. And the police and fire, the way that's working is the money is going into the police and fire fund. And then at some point, when the mayor directs me, we'll move that money into the general fund for their expenditures. And does anybody have any questions?
So on that really quickly, if you don't mind, just so folks understand, rather than have two separate accounts with which we're pulling money for police and fire, we're pulling from one account that'll be reimbursed from the other to a certain extent. Did you, so I guess I have at least one comment, but there was some discussion at the last meeting about some of the grant revenue.
Yes.
Do you want to discuss?
So I looked into that, and we booked the grant revenue according to the city processes and procedures. And there's no change at this time for that. The audit is when they make those adjustments, so it will be made at that time.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm here, I was looking at the December 31st financials, and it looks like we came out very close to expenditures and revenue equaling each other. We just went in the hole by about $100,000 out of, it looks like about 14 million that was budgeted and so on, so that's pretty close. I noticed, let's see, we were down just slightly in the street fund, and then we actually gained about $200,000 in the sanitation fund.
That's correct.
It's pretty amazing that we haven't raised the trash fees or anything in years.
Yeah, the move to Central Arkansas Water was a really good move. We've definitely improved our revenue. I did a calculation on our savings for a full year, and we've got a $60,000 savings when you look at what we've collected, what it costs, the expenses that we no longer have, postage, staff, paper, you know, all that, and we're to the good $60,000.
If I could follow up with that, Councilmember Mosley, so part of the issue, y'all may recall at the last meeting, there was some grant revenue that might have been, that was reimbursement for expenses from the street fund. Apparently, the practice has been going back for.
I went all the way back to 2008.
Is that, those monies get deposited into the general fund, and then during the audit process is when that change is over. We spoke with our auditor, who said that's what has been going on here for quite some time. We discussed how that kind of skews the numbers for the budget process, and that you don't have the full picture, which you're relying on to make budgetary decisions for the following year. And so we discussed, and I think what we're doing 2020 going forward is, and we're still working with the auditor to make sure we're handling it correctly during the transition, is actually booking those in the right account to begin with, instead of waiting until the next audit to fix, to sort of retro. Make those entries.
Sounds good.
Does that make sense? So when you do look at things like this and you say, it looks like we came out pretty good, there may be up to $840,000 showing in the general fund revenues that'll actually later be entered in as street fund, so almost a transfer from general fund to street fund. Were there any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the December financial report.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vega. We will move on to the planning commission reports. Who is the planning commission liaison for January? Your winner, Councilmember Gardner.
So this was an interesting meeting because we don't have anything that's actually going to come before the council this time, so I'm going to kick the can down to, I believe, Councilmember Tierney for February. This may be in your court unless it gets kicked further. This, there's only one item or one development on the agenda, and that was the M at White Oak Crossing. And if you'll remember, we actually approved a preliminary plat for that back either in the spring or the summer of the previous, of the last year. Well, they came back with a redesign that actually took out some lots, made the lots bigger, and they added a large central park all the way through the development, but because of that, it caused it to have to come back to the planning commission. They did request a couple of variances. One was to put an electronic gate in the proposed right-of-way of the city, and that passed unanimously. And then they also wanted to put a gatehouse in the right-of-way, and that did not pass. And so then regarding the development, that was actually tabled until a future planning commission meeting, so that will hopefully come back up again sometime soon. But it was a big enough change that they felt it needed to go through the planning commission again, so.
Outstanding, thank you. So the first time we have that actual report before the items, there isn't anything there. So at this time, I'd entertain a procedural motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving first on to unfinished business, I included a memorandum in the council packet requesting that ordinance 991 be tabled until the first meeting in May, so that we can request an attorney general's opinion on the sick leave. There's also an additional issue regarding the retirement of compensation for sick leave that we encountered, that we definitely want to run that, include that. The city attorney and I had discussed that earlier last week, and I believe the city attorney reached out to Ms. Walker with Attorney General's Office early last Wednesday?
Correct.
And heard back from them, and then we've been in contact with State Representative Lowry, as has other folks about this, and he's volunteered to make that opinion. The city attorney's drafted some language, I've passed it on to Chief Pickard just to make sure that he didn't see anything that maybe we forgot to ask about, or maybe a particular way we're asking that he thinks could be better worded, and so that's the status of that. We have two options, several, we can just go ahead with the reading and go from there, or I'd ask for a motion to table ordinance 991 until the first meeting in May.
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to table ordinance 991 until the first meeting of May, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam City Clerk, if you could help me remember to put this on the agenda for the first meeting in May, whether or not we've heard back from the Attorney General or not. The next order of business, I sponsored, it's not often you get to sponsor an ordinance, put it on first reading and then immediately ask for it to be tabled, but ordinance 992 is dealing with the retirement payout for firefighters. To, if the council was going to increase that for police, to increase it for fire. I'm one of the first people to tell you, I don't think that just because you do something for one, you have to do it for the other, but sometimes there's a good reason to do it for one and do it for both. So I sponsored that ordinance so that they would know that it was pending and then table it along with this. And so I'd also ask for motion to table ordinance 992 to the first meeting in May.
So, Walker?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Scott?
Yeah. I thought the firefighter sick leave was based on a 12-hour day.
Well, what?
So they're able to accrue the number of hours that.
So the ordinance 992 is designed to pay out the larger amount at retirement. So currently, we had the 60 days, is that right?
480.
480 hours.
What did I just say?
720 hours, yeah.
480 is, I think, 68-hour days.
Okay, so that wasn't tied to the fact that they were going to be.
Accruing, so it was saying.
On the short end of the accrual list.
Yes, ma'am, so if we're going to pay out more for retirement of police, I thought it was equitable that we pay out more for the retirement of firefighters as well. And so that's what it was aimed to address.
Thank you.
I've lost place, we had a motion, second, did we vote on that already?
No.
Okay, is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to table ordinance 992 until the first meeting in May, Councilmember Mosley?
Any other departments this might affect that we might be having to make some changes to, you think?
Well, there's all non-uniformed. That are, as currently proposed, remaining at the 480, my numbers are getting mixed up. So at this time, I wasn't recommending that, but I was recommending if we're going to increase retirement payout for uniform, that we just do it for uniform and not just one branch versus the other.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, second, table ordinance 992, first meeting in May, any other discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Both of those will be on first reading in May. Which moves us on to Mayor's comments. I included the Treeboard Annual Report for 2019 that was written by the current Treeboard president. If you didn't get a chance to read that, I'd recommend you do that. When you do that, go ahead and pay attention that Tree City USA status requires $2 per capita, and just be mindful of how you think we're spending that versus maybe how you think we should be spending that. Also, good news, CAW has issued the notice to proceed to their contractor for the water main relocation on Crystal Hill, which was a big holdup before we can fix that road. They had to move their water main that was recently issued last week, I believe, I think it was January 29th. They have 180 days, so basically by the end of July, under that contract, they're supposed to be completed with that. If all goes well, we'll be able to smoothly transition from the completion of the water main relocation project directly into the road improvement project. So that's good, and I know the city attorney and Scott with my office, and me, I guess, have been working on the rights-of-way acquisition, which are.
I was about to say, do you want to talk about that now or later in my comments?
Whichever you would prefer, now work.
While we're on the subject, we were down to three property owners, one of them, we did go ahead, we got the contract with them. The remaining two, I think I believe, I think I told you guys, we had already filed the lawsuit, but we, I've been able to speak with their attorney in the last week, and we are at an agreed amount, and I sent him the revised contract today. And I sent the other property owner, he's had quite a few revisions to that contract, we've gone back and forth, but I sent him the new one today as well, so we're close.
And we're close enough to get CAW to start the water main relocation, which is good. And so once that project gets nearer to actual city construction, we'll have the ribbon cutting and all of that, but in case anyone asks, they'll be doing work out there, and now you know. That concludes Mayor's comments, city council member comments? Oh, I think that went to Councilmember Vaprazan by a nanosecond.
Just want to mention that the traffic at the third exit, there's quite a bit of traffic now, a lot of people are using that, and I don't know how it has affected the Boulevard because I don't use the south end of the Boulevard in the mornings. I have not heard or read anything on it, but I know a lot of people are using it. Coming back about 4 o'clock, 4:30 in the afternoon Friday, people were lined up to get off there, so I was glad to see that. Question, adaptive light system, didn't know how we were coming with that.
The project that'll never go, so it's about half-installed, they're installing the modems, which will then allow for the next install that hosts the actual test. We have multiple contractors, it's moving along, they found that some of the, some of the traffic lights were older or not as compatible as they thought, so we had to do a change order recently. It was approved through Metro Plan, it ended up being something like $9,000 to the city and $40,000 to the Metro Plan and the grants. But with that, we have, I think the city's part is 3,500, the current plans, or we have that money earmarked to take from the, cover your ears, Mr. Hogan, we have that money earmarked to come from the street fund, and we can handle that. I didn't want to come to the council and ask for that because there might be more change orders. So it's sort of earmarked out of a fund in the street fund that we can pay for, and we're not using that $3,500, but if there's any other change orders or as that process nears to the end, and we're sure there's no more change orders, we can come back to the council and ask for that money, so that we're not taking money from, say, street overlays for that. But rather than doing that multiple times, that might happen, just trying to knock that out at once. That answer your question, Councilmember Vaprazan? Also, I wanted to say the engineer, we had a steering committee meeting with the engineers that are currently studying the feasibility of a roundabout at Club Manor and, or Country Club and White Oak Crossing. And the steering committee is just city staff making sure, and one resident, making sure that sort of some of the concerns are being addressed here. By the end of this week, we anticipate having a poll that we plan on putting out on the city website, social media, gauging different people's interest in different things, and trying to get a feel for what we think the public is looking for out there, and some of their priorities as it pertains to that. That information will then come back to the steering committee, and a recommendation will be made to proceed with a certain type of plan. I haven't figured out if we're coming back to the council to, at that point, or if we'll just proceed with the design, but we are hitting heavily the front-end research, making sure that a roundabout, and that the roundabout we're designing is the most preferred one, not simply the one we start, the one we had in our mind when we started. I'm losing track of who's hit buttons in what order, so. So, yep, and then it was Saunders that added the other. Okay, so did you have anything else, Councilmember Vaprazan? Okay, Councilmember Scott?
I was wondering if we've made any progress on any of the annexations, either the one on the east end of town or any on the north end of town.
No. No is the short answer, on the north end of town, we have the, good night, it's a test of all my knowledge here. At the north end of town, we've, I believe we just selected the group that will be doing the illustrative map for the north end of town, and meeting with different property owners out there, as well as city planning staff, to see if we can't come up with a sort of micro strategic plan that was approved and presented to y'all in the budget session. We're thinking that with that, there is the most prospect for getting folks to voluntarily annex in, in the north end of town. There's been a recent development with a property owner or someone who's buying some property that borders the city that wants to come in, but that is not something we've talked about in the past. On the east end of town, no, there's not been anything. Mr. Grummer is currently putting together a, in fact, I spoke with him this week, he's putting together a checklist to be able to pass out to some of the residents as to what we think some of the pros and cons are, or what they, you know, what can stay the same and what will be different, as well as that process, but that's as far as we've got there. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, sir, just going back to the ordinance 991 and the AG opinion, would y'all mind sending us a copy of that text that you have prepared to send to Mr. Representative Lowry?
Sure.
The, yeah, just what the wording of that would look like.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak up and remind this council that we are, how much are we going to be spending upfront on this roundabout on, at White Oak Crossing?
The budgeted amount is $150,000.
To build it?
To design it and conduct the study.
Okay, well, I want to remind you, that's a convenience issue, okay, that roundabout. We have a safety issue at Club Manor and South Odom, I know I keep preaching, but I don't want blood on my hands, because somebody's going to get killed there one of these days. So I don't want us to forget about that and get caught up in a convenience roundabout, okay? That's not proven to be an issue. Club Manor is a proven issue, so I just want to bring that up again.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders, the current status, the council asked me to look into other options in lieu of a roundabout. The city engineer has prepared multiple narratives, I got a few maps of drawings of different suggestions for that area, just at this last, so last week on Wednesday. And from there, we, he's supposed to be giving me a narrative with kind of like a report that kind of weighs the pros and cons of different options. And once we have that in a condition worth publishing, we'll be sure and pass it on to y'all, because that project is kind of in limbo, or at least that intersection's still in limbo, just wanted y'all to know it's still being looked at.
Well, and I'm repeating myself because I've said it before, but I don't have a problem with a traffic signal there, just something to help the traffic flow through in a less dangerous manner. If we can put a traffic signal, I don't want to spend a million bucks on a roundabout either, so I understand that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
And again, so we think we have, also, we think we have a pretty good chance applying for a grant for the White Oak Crossing Country Club Parkway Roundabout, and getting that funded largely through a grant. No guarantees, we're working with the engineers to make sure that we're designing it in such a way that it ticks a lot of boxes on what the folks are looking at when approving grants. And so we think we have a pretty good shot, and have been communicating pretty thoroughly with Metro Plan, so it might be that it costs the City of Maumell very little to build that. That's if everything goes perfectly. Any additional Councilmember comments? Councilmember Tierney?
Just to echo a little bit of what Mr., our Councilman Saunders was saying and what you were saying, I've had a couple of people approach me just in the last week complaining about how difficult it is at the White Oaks Crossing to try to make a left turn when they're coming from Maumell. One person was saying it took them like about 25 minutes for like three cars just to make a left turn, but again, this is always at 8 o'clock or 5 o'clock, the rest of the day, it doesn't seem to be quite as much of a problem, but I've had some people tell me they've experienced long encounters, and I don't know if those are isolated incidents or any kind of a pattern.
Did you say 25 minutes?
I had one person tell me that, yeah, now, I don't know if he's exaggerating or not.
The traffic study that we have right now shows that intersection currently at a, about a D grade, which means that the average wait time is about 30 seconds, there's 3.2 cars stacked when you get there. There's, I can't.
This was claimed to be at like 8 o'clock in the morning or 5 o'clock in the afternoon.
So the.
When it usually experiences its problems and backups, and that may be an exaggeration, but I have had a couple of people tell me they've had extended waits of, you know, several cars, it's just it's hard to get through, make a left on there. And again, what Mr. Councilman Saunders was saying about the, you know, South Odom and Club Manor, like if I was trying to take that way today, I had to take a right turn and go back up to the Boulevard just to make the council meeting, so I agree and concur with his assessment to put in a traffic light there.
Well, we've had some serious accidents there, and that's why I keep pushing for this, because safety is our job one.
Right, I agree.
Public safety.
Sooner rather than later.
And, and it's not just at.
Thank you much. Any additional council member comments? Seeing none, Madam City Attorney?
No comments.
Madam City Clerk-Treasurer?
No comments.
At this point in time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, we adjourned.
Wow. Wow. Six thirty. Woo, that was a lot of words. I was trying to talk fast.